Thank you. Hi.
You have another chair, Gail?
I'll grab one over here.
Good chair, right?
I just want a little.
All right, it's 5:30. We're gonna call meeting order if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We can have the roll ball.
Yoder.
Here.
Nunez. Asher. Black.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Brock. Addison. Penlon.
Here.
Lowry. President. McDonald.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Nixon.
Here.
And Green.
Here.
Great form. Next up, we got the agenda in front of us. Is there any additions or additions to the agenda?
I hope we approve the agenda as presented.
Paid by the citizens, supported by the number, I believe. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor signify with say a "aye."
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Carrie. Next up, we have conflict of interest. Assuming nobody has a conflict, any on the agenda tonight? We have no public comments, staff comments? All right. Next up, we got our meeting minutes from September the 24th. Anybody have any questions? No, I'll take a motion.
I move that we set the minutes for September 24th as projected.
So is that? All right. Most made by Mr. Donalds, support by Mr. Penlon. Any further discussion minutes? Not? All those in favor signify with say an "aye."
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. All right, we have no business. Next up, we have new business, Leland County general plan. Everybody had a chance or got to talk at the checklist in front of us, the five-year plan review. You have to talk with staff. Eighteen, the last time you didn't really go through the general plan of Leland County, so every time you gotta gotta at least do a review. For about six years now, so.
Twenty nineteen.
Oh, adopted, okay, so we're on base then, so. In this copy here, you have a checklist, there's 12 steps to go through. First step is to decide if we want to do the five-year plan, we feel like it's compatible and nothing needs necessarily be changed. We'll just make a record of it here at the meeting. You have a motion to that effect or whatever, if you feel like something does have to be changed, then we go through the step-by-step process, identifying everything. Pretty self-explanatory here through the step-by-step process, but it takes a couple of months just to go through it unless somebody has a specific amendment or anything like that, so. I guess I'm open to discussion on whether members feel like we should go through the process staff.
I kinda went back and was looking through the minutes because when I started, it was twenty eighteen. You're already in the process, but it looks like a committee was formed. And they kind of decided back then that they wanted a survey done. And then based off that survey, they made the decision that they needed to update the plan.
No.
So I would hopefully want to put a committee together.
Do a committee and then let the committee decide whether to go forward with it or what to do.
Yeah.
No.
Good job.
So we can put a committee together, I don't know. Do you remember, recall how large the committee was? Five members?
I think we met just right before this meeting started.
Generally, yeah. So yeah, why don't we just set up a committee, I guess, and let the committee go through and figure out if we need to do anything with the plan and then bring it back to the full board here with their recognition, I guess, so. Is there anybody willing to volunteer to be on the committee, I guess? It's creepy. Okay.
No one else?
Why? I'll do. Now, okay.
I briefly spoke out, guess I'll say, I'm great with it, I'd love to be involved. I probably want to wait until after the election, only because if I if I may have other obligations, so if the committee would accept that, then I'm willing to serve, otherwise, good luck.
No, I probably should do the same because of the role-commission position I've been applied for. Think I'd do full love and tell anyone what happens with them, maybe not be making a determination till after the election.
All right, Mr. Penlon, Ms. McDonald. Mr. Donald, well. There, anybody else to make it five? I don't know, do I, am I an ex officio, or how does that? How does that work?
Jason, usually in this case.
Usually the chair is, usually can be in there, you know, it's not necessarily their voting member, but it can just be in.
It was in the last.
Can you remove with the last?
I do, I was on the video.
Probably not.
So.
I think it was done before I came on the board.
Yeah, well, it was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so.
I moved up in nineteen.
Oh, yeah, and it was before the law, so.
Well, we were gonna schedule this maybe before each of our meetings.
That's generally what we did in the past, yeah, I was, I can't remember to meet. We didn't meet at 5:30, so we met later, so, yeah, generally about an hour before the meeting, I guess, usually what was in the past where.
You have five minutes?
Got four.
I think I would let my mind run, I mean, even if I did get on the road condition, I still would do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so we got um, Mr. Penlon, Mr. Black, Mr. Brown. I wouldn't serve on that.
And if none of those could make it, then we have to do it all.
Okay, so we got Nixon as an alternate, if need be, I guess, so.
Are you finding a thing of evidence?
You just include me in the discussion, I guess, if I could make it, if not, but yeah, at least sort of know what's going on, I guess, so. But I don't necessarily have to be a voting member.
Is there a check of the plan on the website somewhere?
Yes, it is, yeah. I believe there's a hard copy somewhere too, it might be in their office, I'm not sure, so. There's many archives.
Is this having to be copied what they did last month?
No, this is the process. The process five years ago was pretty much every ten years, you have to do a full overhaul. Actually, we have to do it while required to do an actual review then. So that was five years ago, so now we're just in the five-year plan where it's just the reviews. And you can move it, pass it on, say it's good, or we can make it up, whatever. Every ten years, you do have to do an actual go through the entire thing, yeah. So with that, is somebody be willing to make a motion to create this committee to work on that, I guess? That way we have interminations and file.
I move that we appoint a five-member committee consisting of Creepy, Miller, McDowell, Brown, Black, and Nixon as an alternative to review and come up with a recommendation on how to proceed with the review of the Leland County general plan.
So there's four.
Four.
Miller. Any further discussion or questions on that?
Yeah, one, just so probably in preparation for this meeting, can you possibly send up PDF of the current one? Whatever, dig or send it out there.
It'll probably have to be a link to it because it's so big. Okay.
That'd be good.
Okay.
There you go.
Looking at it, we hope.
Yeah, it's out there, but I know in my township, it's not even referred to a lot of times, but my lawyer required to have it, I guess, so. All right, most made, any further discussion? Not? All in favor of the founding, or the members on the committee say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Hold the same sign. Motion carried. All right, so let's, I guess staff will let the members know kind of when the next meeting is, kind of set a time, go there. Start that process, so. Awesome. All right, item number two, we have member terms expiring. You can see all the way on the back there, we got three members currently that are gonna be, their terms are expired this year. Generally, as a rule of thumb, if somebody serves three terms, was considered, I don't, I don't think it was in statute necessarily, but it was generally that some of the board commissioners kind of followed. Somebody served three terms. That there was kind of, in essence, a term limit and roll over, I guess, so. My understanding, it looks like I'm the only one that has served my three terms. Everybody else is still capable of being renewed. I know in the past, there's been times when the board has extended that for individuals, so. And talking with staff, it sounded like we had no one apply either for any positions, from my understanding, is that correct?
Yes, I talked to Lauren in the admin office, she ran the advertisement in the paper. I think she said she got two applications and either one of them were interested in applying to commission.
So yeah, we could either, and I don't know, do, do we need a formal decision from this body this month, or can we wait till November to do this?
I'd like to see this wait till November because you may be in a different position at that time.
Yeah, because I think they make appointments in December, if I understand correctly, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think they deadline for the applications in November first.
Okay, so we still got some time, yeah, till November. All right, so yeah, we'll just, yeah, we'll have it on the November agenda then, kind of. Generally, this body will give a recommendation to board as to who want to be appointed or whatever, so. We don't have. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm wondering, can we, do we know if Casey Nunez is going to return, has she said anything? Mel was afraid to ask you, are you planning to return? They're gonna stay.
I wonder if it came, became a kind of I don't see that, because they usually meet there.
Okay, so then maybe somebody, your IT staff, you talk to Mr. Nunez and just clarify, see if he wants to be reappointed, I guess, so. Any other questions? All right. If not, well, we'll move on to reports, I guess.
You're doing great.
You have a report on the housing actions thing, is there any?
I have a report, yeah. I'll take some of this, this is, first thing, right.
Do we have an update on Parks and Rec?
So, so Parks and Rec did not meet in in October. Another was one action committee, and that was to accept free trees through the RELEAP program, which they did outside of procedure and just accepted the grant to put some trees in Veranca Valley Park. But they're not going to be able to get it done this fall, so it's probably going to be done in spring. Through DTE. So that's really the only action, which was not an action of or of Parks and Recreation, but it will go in one of our parks. The having you reported on last month is that we were looking at facilities manager for our complexes. And Mr. Roach has been hired. And have you, Mr. Roach, yeah, Mr. Lewis just announced him today, I was actually just digging for any notes I wrote about him, I know, I remember last time Roach, because I know some Roaches. Yeah, it doesn't happen anymore, I forgot his first name. But anyways, we have a facilities manager, and I think he's going to start, I think in November, but don't call me out now.
Someone from the county, or you don't know?
Ah, where did he say he came from? We had a budget meeting, so there was a, there was a lot to remember about today. Do you remember where he said he came from?
Don't remember.
Any questions? All right. Next up, we have communications.
Hope everybody guys copy up.
Okay, that was just everything that was covered there.
The sessions that we went to.
Great. Any questions for staff on that? All right. Comments? Any further staff comments? My Michigan comment to be, I don't know, I guess I'd like to hear everybody's feedback on the annual session that we had. If anybody had any feedback on that, any suggestions for a bigger turnout, obviously, we didn't get it, but thought it was very informational, based on what we did here, I guess, so.
The only thing I would like to see heard, at least, I would like to hear more about the cost factor, anticipated cost factor. What they're thinking, that type of thing. Who that they didn't touch on that. Supposed to be solar, like, just kind of projecting expense or talking, I don't know, that's behavior, or how that is. Well, this one, that one. Because that's the controversial issue, is the cost. Cost. And recovery on the money. I know the wind generation is.
Oh, he's talking about the solar panels? Do you have a question about them? I couldn't hear you there.
Well, I, yeah, I should have spoke up. I, I questioned while we were there about the cost factor of solar energy. I'd like to hear more about the dollars and cents. Because that is the biggest argument they've got, is, is what is your recovery on, on your expense to put solar panels in?
That is the debate.
Knowing their life expectancy, knowing the January, we average five, five days a month for sun. You know, how much solar energy you're gonna get on panels from the winter malls? And there was just a lot of that that was left out of the thing.
A lot of those are the very same questions we were trying to ask the man who wants to put the panels in here, but instead of just answering some of those questions, he got combated instead of eventually answering the questions, and and now the next tactic is smear campaigns using the Leland Enterprise, which is printing articles full of untrue things. So that's, that's where, that's where that is. The state or the MPSU did not award Leland County the grant on the first round.
What Mel was referring to was the annual planning session.
Yeah, isn't that what you said, you were talking about the solar panels, so on this?
Just to.
I'm talking about, and maybe I'm all, I thought you were talking about the seminar we had with the
Right, the annual planning session that we had, yeah.
But it was all solar energy, largely.
In general, yeah.
Oh, in general?
Yeah, so it wasn't necessarily the project here, just in general, state regulations that are coming out.
General terms, yes, but when I asked the question about dollars and cents, they got quiet quick. I mean, quite candid, but I, I was disappointed in that aspect.
Right, in general.
They start talking, putting something like that in, and they leave out the most important part. Is what's the cost to put these panels, and what is the return on your investment? You know, that's been the biggest argument.
Sure, yeah, there is, and that's, that's why they have to offer the incentives to put them in. And the only reason they're being put in is because of the incentives and because of mandates.
Yep. Well, they didn't answer my question, and I did ask.
They won't.
I don't think they.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, my, our, our planning commissioner, from our township, the chairperson was there, and he got back to me, it was very disappointed we didn't have greater attendance, because he thought himself it was a very good presentation, he appreciated the handouts. We talked briefly. You know, my, my inclination was that to understand, she was going to talk about the changes to the state law. And so that really negated any kind of conversation about small installments or residential installment. But I think there were those in the house that were hoping she was going to talk about that, and I was, I was one of those. But I realized her focus was exclusively on the, on the act and its changes in the act, and that was large. I was pleased to hear that Leland County is not a recipient or a planned destination for any of these mega sites. I was, I'm not surprised, and I appreciate what was sent out to us by Jenny with the, with the maps again, which indicates that we're not a desirable site for solar or for wind. And as she talked about, the cost of land here would be extraordinary as well, so. Selfishly, and personally, I was kind of glad to hear those results. But I, I liked her presentation, but it was pretty astounding for, for someone who'd been on this commission for several years to see an audience that had more members on this planning commission in attendance than we did non-members almost. I think it was about fifty-fifty, and I, I don't know what to make of that, because the topic is still out there. People are, are still interested in solar. And maybe we just, I mean, we did the advertising, I mean, I saw those articles in the paper, I think all the efforts were made to get communications out to people, it just must not have been the topic that most people wanted to hear. I don't know.
Any other?
Um, I did, oh, I'm sorry, Matt? Mr. Roach is, I believe he lives in Northport. So we got my signature from Northport, don't we? Yeah, and he, I don't remember the first name, Mr. Roach, I remember the last name. And he's military, ex-military, and I think he did that, something about facilities in the military, so.
Like the, or?
Yeah, no. R O A C H. Yeah, okay, cemetery member.
Yeah, that, as far as going back to the solar panels and stuff, yeah. Mr. Nixon said there, they said there wasn't many places in Leland County desirable, but I guess I look at Caston Township, Caston Township right now is full of a bunch of gravel pits. And my thought is, is what are they gonna do with the gravel pits? There are firms that are built up around them right now. You now have barren, desolate land that has been dug down to I see those as actually opportune places to be able to put something like that.
Yeah, that was exactly my thought, too.
I mean, I say, out of mine.
For lakes, you guys would have some lakefront property in Caston Township. Raise your taxes, they see the war, that's what I think we should do. Sure, lay line them and flood them.
I'm not for nuclear hotels, I'd eat a hundred acre.
Oh, yeah, they're large.
Coming close to a square mile. Really?
Oh, they're.
Down in Muskegon, they've got a gravel pit, selling lots around it, and they're wanting for top power.
Are they gonna flood it?
They already flooded, they done the gravel, they end up with a lake, it's probably a hundred and twenty acre lake.
See, that's a great idea.
That's huge.
I'd rather look at a lake than solar panels.
All right, any other comments?
Maybe we should have a cost analysis training session next year on solar panels. Suggestion.
Be interesting.
There's some great speakers.
I mean, she took us through the procedures that are required. If we were a large industry that wanted to obtain solar energy.
Yeah, her focus was not on the cost net. That, I think, in, at least what I gathered was that is kind of clearly up to the people doing the work of putting in the solar panels, right? Like, so if you're in a community that wants to do this, that's your job to go and figure out how much is this gonna cost you, et cetera. She was simply saying, these new regulations, Michigan is on track to be fifty percent, you know, in a short time. So, you know, so there's these massive bounds and leaps that are in need to be made according to the state government to meet those standards, and we as individuals involved in planning should be aware of that, you know, at least on base, or how to navigate those systems, because they didn't, she didn't even have all the answers on that. You know, which I found that very troubling, maybe, but also I'm hopeful that they'll get their stuff in order, the state. Because she said that they still haven't got my final confirmation as to where these things. And they're getting ready to start, like, enforcing this presumably, which is kind of silly, but but I thought it was informative, and I joked, but, you know, maybe that is a real next year kind of thing, or suggestion, to do the cost analysis, or, you know, on a small scale, does it make sense for our community or communities like us and around us to, to invest in solar? I mean, that's probably not a bad conversation.
It might be time to do that, because she mentioned the fact that there's that Michigan State is dealing with reflective windows for solar.
Yes.
We know there's, there's roofing tile.
And the other piece that I found, probably, at least in my opinion, the most important piece of information that I garnered from that entire session was the money potential that you have. Now, if you only get the one-time payment, it's not a ton, but if you end up with a contract year after year, you could, you could really finance some, some serious projects. And that's, what kind of projects do you want financed? But I found that almost jaw-dropping, and I'm surprised we didn't talk about it more, I was doing the base math, I'm like, we got like a million bucks. That's, that's not chump change, I mean.
But nobody wants to.
Yeah, and, but we're not a good spot, but in any case, I think.
Although, my, my chairperson and my planning commissioner did, I don't know if she contacted you guys, if you did or, or not. But he's got a sample language for inclusion in our, in our zoning ordinance, or how to manage solar. And we have some language in there now, but it's not to the six, I think, six pages of documentation. I think he may have gotten it from Michigan State. I think he got it from the class, and, and I think he contacted Mary, Mary. So, right, he said, on his document, so he wants to plug that into our, our planning commission meeting, so at least talk. I think that's twelve years now we're working on our zoning amendments, so it's about time we incorporate that, you know.
Wouldn't that the purpose of the whole discussion?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that the purpose of the, of the whole discussion? Is to make sure that your local ordinances are compliant with the, the ordinance from the state? And so the takeaway is, what does our ordinance say?
Absolutely.
One thing I noticed, I was in Ontario last week, uh, my way from Canada. And I noticed a lot of the farms have those pedestal ones that tracks the sun throughout the day, and there's, they're all over the farming communities over there. And I assume the farm itself is being upgraded above that panel. Well, I think it is, they're all.
Usually, it, they're usually placed in, in a connect, and go, gone right into the grid, so, I don't know, they generally do. The farm itself. Okay, uh, Wilberene is trying to place a two, we have a two hundred and fifty megawatt solar farm. Down in lower Michigan, um, it. Tim. There's been a lot of public pushback now by it, so again, I think it's maybe, I'm trying to think of where we are on that, through the. First township planning commission. Um. Process. But whether it makes it all the way through will be, you know, be interesting to see whether it actually gets built. So public is starting to push back on, like they did the wind farms.
You know, just one more comment, jump on what Brian was saying. Facetiously, but then he got serious about it, and maybe the topic for next year is how solar may benefit area farmers, because I have a. Good friend that's a graduate of Cornell University, and I mentioned this to Mary after her remarks that night. And Cornell is, as a, uh, it might be worth exploring, they have. The only one in the country, researchers developed solar panels to be used in cherry farms. And they're translucent, so they allow the light to go through, but they put them out in the cherry orchard. It's not like there's this area for the. Energy, it's right through the.
Place trading in the rows must be.
Yeah, right in rows, so you get, you get some extra light and protection for the cherry, definitely, as well as power. Kind of interesting, you know.
Very.
But maybe, maybe in this area, it'd be interesting to have somebody from Cornell University, or, because Michigan State is probably the next leader in that, and, uh. I don't know that they're touching that at this point, that they are, so, they don't.
Like, if you're basing technology for cherries here that are dying.
Yeah.
Get killed, they, that saved everything, so.
Yeah.
But you'd get a great crop of cherries, and there's still no market.
Somebody told, this is just an aside, but somebody told me that with all the trade negotiations that go. That, and it makes some sense, that the United States is very concerned about preserving the Air Force facility in Turkey. And in the negotiations. It was permissible for Turkey to export cherries to the United States. That's where, that's one of the reasons why we're seeing cherry crops now. Don't put that in the minutes, that's, I don't, I don't know how true that is, but the parties that we're talking about have credibility, and.
Wouldn't make sense.
It's an interesting dimension. I never thought of that, why we, as I know, talking with Don Gregory for many years, how frustrated. He and his brother have been, but not being able to. The export of cherries, well, I'll compete with the, the Turkish cherries and even liar store, and, uh, that may be an explanation. Not interesting.
Well, even when they were trying to stop the import of them. They were. Shipping them to a different country that was allowed imports.
Okay.
Through concentrate, so, because they can do it so much cheaper, because they don't have the regulations that our farmers are faced with when they're trying to breed cherries here.
No.
So, like, the things that they can spray with, they don't have the spotted winged or sapphala that our, our, our farmers are trying to deal with. Because they can spray for it, we are not allowed to spray for it here like they used to be able to.
Bring back DDT.
Yeah, it'll do it. There, there were other things that weren't, uh, DDT, but they're no longer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, those were the good days.
All right.
That's from Cape, Florida, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Or drift.
Yeah, getting back on topic here, I guess, so.
That says comments, that's, well, now that they are.
Just back, just the best.
All right, if there, you know, other comments, I guess. We'll move on, yeah, I guess, just wanna remind everybody, enjoy your fall, and don't forget to vote, so, good to that.